I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Novi Public Library Board Trustees for this Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. First of all, I'd like to call to order and do a pledge of allegiance. If you're able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the secretary to read the roll call.
Trustee Bartlett.
Here.
Trustee Burke.
Here.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Trustee Havelangas is here. Trustee Gualapu.
Here.
Trustee Stirring.
Here. Next item on our agenda is approving the agenda. Everybody has our handout. Anybody want to add anything to the agenda?
Through the chair, I'd like to add matters for board action to go over the first reading of our annual report. No vote on it tonight, just first reading.
Okay. So, we would be, unless there's any other comment, we would be approving the agenda with the addition of the first reading of the Novi Public Library Annual Report, which I would put as item number five in matters for library board action.
I'll move as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, the secretary can roll.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Havelangas says yes. Trustee Gualapu.
Yes.
Trustee Stirring.
Yes.
And Trustee Bartlett.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes of October ninth, two thousand twenty-five, which was a regular board meeting, and also the approval of the claims and warrants, which are in accounts two seventy-one and two seventy-two, on pages eleven through fourteen in our handout.
Move to approve.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to support the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I ask the secretary to call a vote.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Havelangas says yes. Trustee Gualapu.
Yes.
Trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett.
Yes.
And Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item is a presentation. We're honored to have the friends here tonight to make a presentation. Sue Johnson and both of you.
Julie, would you like to come up?
Julie would always like to come up, right?
Yes. This is from the friends and friends of friends. Wow. It consists of the twenty-six hundred dollars that we made on the quilt raffle. Oh wow is right. It far exceeded my expectations. A seven hundred dollar donation from Richard Rich and Judy Wright, which we get pretty much yearly from them. They're a very good Friends supporter, and we thought this year, since it's our special sixty-fifth, we would include it in our total, as well as a donation in memory of Norm Young from one of our friends. We got, much to my surprise, this week in the mail, a sixty-five hundred dollar check through Fidelity Charity, that someone wanted to go to our sixty-fifth project. We got another two thousand dollar check, also anonymous, that was directed toward the youth renovation area, as well as a longtime friend who is very generous with us every year. Part of her donation this year, she wanted twenty-five hundred dollars to go to the youth area renovation. Total being fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Wow, that's awesome.
It is awesome.
I am, I'm speechless. This is wonderful. You know, I am sometimes nervous about doing big campaigns and what that will mean. It is a lot of work, and you're not sure the temperature, but what I have realized is our community is very generous, and we have very generous library users and supporters. And so, this is added on top of the thirty-some thousand that we already have. We are beyond fifty percent of our goal already, and it's only November.
Wow.
So, we have a whole year to do this campaign. I feel really good about it. I thank the friends, Mary Angela and Sue for being here tonight, but I thank the friends for designating those funds or talking with people that are interested in supporting and having them think about this project. And I'm just, I am just thrilled. So, thank you. I thank all of you as well. You helped with this big event, you know, that we celebrated on October twenty-sixth, and it's amazing. So, thank you so much to our friends and to you.
You're very welcome.
We're glad to help.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, friends. Wow.
That's a nice surprise.
Good way to start.
We always have pleasant surprises from our friends.
Yes, me too.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think it should sit like right there.
This is the part of the agenda for the public comment. In order to hear all citizens at a reasonable hour, the library board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session, however, it is an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board. Citizens must state their first, last name and address. Any citizens wish to address the library board? I see no one rushing up to the podium, so we will move on to the next section in our agenda, which is the reports. No reports from student representatives tonight.
There is no report, but if I could just mention that for October, we had eight hundred and seventy-one attendees for Teen Space, which is really great numbers. So, yes, thank you.
Next item is the president's report. I appoint you to Section sixteen in our handbook. I will not read it, but it's a certificate of proclamation from the state of Michigan, from the governor and from the lieutenant governor, designating October as Library Appreciation Month.
Thank you.
We're in, Library Appreciation Month, that's great. Second thing I want to mention, and it's on page seventeen in our handbook, it's a request from staff to get to know the library board members. This would be an opportunity for the board to meet with staff, maybe thirty, forty minutes. We would have no more than three board members present at the time to not be in violation of the Open Meeting Act, but it would be an opportunity for the board members to share their personal, their professional background, why they chose to be a member of the library board, what do we enjoy most about being a library board member and the work, and what are you reading, and what do we see as challenges and strength of libraries. So, I think this is a great idea. I don't know, Julie, if you've got any closer to dates to do any of this or not, or are we still working on that?
I am still working on it. I first wanted to get approval, but I'm hoping to do it in early December, like the first couple of weeks, because I thought I'd incorporate, if it's a morning, maybe some breakfast items and stuff, and kind of celebrate the holidays with the staff by doing this as well, or afternoon with cookies and things like that. But I will try to get them all done in the first two weeks, I hope, of December. What I'll do now is, I'm going to send out a Google pool, and I'll give you dates and times, and then ask you to tell me when you're available, and then I can look and then put three people to, you know, to a section, and then have a few meetings and offer times.
Okay.
Kathy?
I'm just, I was really pleased to see that, and I wondered how this came about. I mean...
So, we do an anonymous comments through the staff, and it came through that way, asking if there was an opportunity to do that and get to know staff members, or board members more, and I thought, sure, absolutely.
I love this idea.
This is the first time anybody has ever really asked.
It is, yeah.
I guess that's good.
And they might have, you know, questions as well. That's why I'm keeping it to the OMA, because if you end up talking about library things, you know, I just want to be, I want to make sure that, you know, we're in compliance with that. But, you know, they might ask you questions as well, or, you know, how you feel about, you know, book banning. I don't know. You know, I think it's an opportunity, though, for you to get a chance to meet some of the employees.
It is kind of curious to wonder what they think our background is.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, do they think we're all librarians? Do they think what our connection is?
Yeah, they know we're...
Or do they think we don't know anything at all about librarians? We need to dispel that rumor, I guess.
They can tell we're not librarians.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Go ahead, Carla.
I'm just wondering what kind of format are you picturing? Is it just going to be like a mingler thing?
I think informal, no. I think we'll do it informal, you know, I've got a second-floor meeting room, and, you know, either the boardroom or the second-floor meeting room, where you can sit around and just have a chance to chat. I don't want it to feel uncomfortable or anything, and just, yeah.
Yeah, no, that sounds great.
More like a coffee meet and greet type thing.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great idea. Next item I want to mention, and these were, at least questions that I'd asked, maybe some other people had asked them as well, and that was, why was the automatic return closed on the day of the water break? It was one day. And the answer is provided there, that apparently if there's an emergency, we close it and didn't know the length of it.
Right.
I mean, I'm glad they followed policy. I still, maybe it's because I feel so strongly about the use of that automatic book return, and I kind of remember it as a promise to the community when we built the library, that they followed the policy, and that was good, but I still would like us if we could rethink that maybe a little bit, or reconsider if there's a way of keeping that return open more than what this policy provides. And I would even suggest if, you know, somebody has to come back and do two hours in the middle of a weekend or something like that, to do what it takes to accommodate the books coming in, that I think we're in a situation where it is, we shut it down because it's going to get overloaded, like in a two-day, three-day, but at the same time, it may get overloaded. To me, that means it's used so much, in that it's very desirable in the community, and I know that it was desired in the community with the survey that we did then. And I understand why we might close it, and that's fair, and we followed our own policy. But I still would kind of like to throw this up for some kind of more thought and discussion. If there's ways we can, and maybe with the new system...
I was just going to say, well, the new material...
We can work on that in a way that I feel, I would personally like it to be open when it is sometimes closed.
Sure. And I do respect that, and I do agree with you, because with the new machine, we are hoping, there's a concern of, at this point, with the age of the machine, too, that a trust factor in, will it not work, right? So, with the new machine and the new technology, will we be able to leave it? There's also abilities to check on the machine differently and remotely than we did in the past.
That's what I was wondering.
So, I definitely agree with you. As we put the new machine in, I'd like to look at those opportunities. Yes, thank you.
And then, the second question, and I think I asked the question, maybe somebody else had the same thought, about the use of the checkouts, the machine checkouts as opposed to the personal checkouts. And I appreciate the survey that I believe Sarah did.
Yes.
In terms of what other libraries do, and we're doing as well as other libraries. But West Bloomfield was up there at ninety-some percent, and so, anything we can do in a polite and kind way to encourage those self-checkouts, I think there, we can do that, you know. But we're not, we're not in a bad state or anything like that.
Right.
But at least for me, I think that's something I would like to see used more, if the people are willing to do it. And we don't want people to have to do something they don't want to do, but I think it's usually a matter of convenience. And I know I'm lazy, and if there's people up at the front desk, I'm going to go to the people, because I like to talk to the people.
Right.
But if they're busy, I'm going to go to the checkout.
Sure.
And however we can use those checkouts more, without inconveniencing people, or making them feel bad, or whatever, I still like to encourage that.
Okay, great.
And how they do it in West Bloomfield, I don't know if they're getting up to ninety-some percent.
Yeah, I'm going to have to look further into that.
Well, they probably don't have anybody at the desk.
That's...
Yeah, that's what I think.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
Yeah.
That's what I go either.
So, I mean, it's, you know...
They might not have anyone available.
Again, as I wrote, you know, I think we have really done a great job with providing great customer service, and our community appreciates that.
They do.
You know, and having the personal connections when they can.
Yep.
So, you know, I remember being able to go into a bank, and people know my name. I go into my Starbucks, because I have another one aside from the libraries, I'll admit it, and they know my order and they hand it to me.
Right.
You know, it's things like that, when you make personal connections, I think that turns out what also is gift-giving and donations later, too.
Yep.
So, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to compromise, you know, that and the ability for people to connect with us in a great way.
Excellent.
Yeah. Thank you.
More as an announcement related to anything else, but in a reminder, the budget meetings, budget planning meetings, anyway, are Saturday, January seventeenth, from ten to two, and on Thursday, February fifth, from five to eight. And that's not that far away anymore.
No, it's not.
It's coming fast.
And so, because these are not on the regular scheduled board meetings, it's worth getting into our calendars now, if we put them in our calendars, or our phone, or however we do.
Right. And I think I sent you calendar invites, so I, yes, and I'll double-check it again, but I think I put them on your calendar already.
Hmm.
If I can add something just really quick, because it's in relation to budgets, since, you know, that was mentioned, is I found out that there's going to be some more changes to the finance department with the city, and so, I don't know, like, I feel confident with what I'm working with, with what I have to do at the library and my things, if there were reports that might have to be pulled differently, that might be difficult through our budget sessions. And so, I'm just making you aware of that now, I was made aware of that today, that there's some, you know, there's some staffing that they're struggling with. So, I think I will be okay. Also, Bindia is going to be, our bookkeeper, is going to be on vacation. She's traveling out of the country, and she's going to be gone December tenth through January tenth, which impacts the January meeting, but I am learning. I'm her backup, and I've been learning what Bindia does and what needs to be done in order to make sure that the budgets and the invoices and things like that are completed. So, we should be good, but I just thought I would bring that to your attention. You know, as I'm getting those final numbers for budgeting, she'll be just getting back, but we should be good.
Okay.
Okay.
It still makes sense to have it capped on the seventeenth?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I...
You could adjust it.
I think what I'm going to do is, let's plan for these, but I'm going to find out, because there's really no one to turn in our budgets to, when we approve them.
Oh.
I'm going to find out if there's going to be a delay in budgets and, you know, do we have a little bit of a change in the calendar? So, I'll find out.
Okay.
Okay? All right. But I just found that out today, so I will keep you all posted.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Normally, at this time, I try to tell you what I've done in the past month that's library-related, but I think there's so many other members of the board that have attended the same events. Let me go first, I'm going to go last, because there was a lot of wonderful events we've had in the past month.
Yeah.
And I'll open it up to the board to describe what they've gone to, or what's coming up, if they want to.
Go ahead.
Kathy.
Surprise, surprise. No, I know that I think, I don't think I'm prejudiced about this, but I don't know, I've been to other libraries, and I don't know of any other library that's had as many community events and brought the community in more than the Novi Public Library. I think this past two months in particular have been particularly busy. I know that I did a program on Matt Moran's General Store, along with Randy, in October. That was a historical commission program, and we had another one last night, and I know several of you attended last night, about the Edmund Fitzgerald, and that was probably the biggest attendance we've ever had, one hundred and thirty-eight people attended last night. And of course, the sixtieth, fifth anniversary wreaths across Novi, I know that that's another event that many, many here attended, and the Friendship Doll, and all of the other special things that no other community has, you know. And I think we can be very proud of our staff, maybe is tired right now, for, with all the things that have been going on, but I personally would like to thank them, and all the people that do the planning, because it's important for the community. Obviously, they want these programs, because the attendance justifies what we're doing. And I know there've been concerts, and there've been, there was a concert on Sunday as well, so there have been a lot of community events. We are definitely more than books, but I think that these kind of opportunities for education and information are just as relevant as reading a book, really. I mean, people learn all different kinds of ways, and the kind of questions they ask at the programs and everything leads me to believe that they really want the information, and they want to connect to this community. And I don't think any other source in this community connects more than this library. So, I'm not prejudiced at all. But I just feel like it's important for us to say these things, and to acknowledge staff in particular, who work so hard to make sure that all goes well, and to the board members, too, and the other people that support it all. So, that's really all I have to say about that, but thanks for the opportunity.
Very well said. Anybody else?
I was at the Human Library event, which was very, very cool. Unfortunately, it wasn't as well-attended as last year, so I think, I'd love to see it continue, and talk about maybe doing some other marketing ideas to get more people involved, but it was a wonderful experience. The people who came had a great time. I know Emma worked really hard to get it all put together, so, as you were saying, Kathy, I know these staff members really bend over backwards to make sure that these events are all just superb, so I really enjoyed it. I look forward to next year already.
If I can echo that, we do agree that marketing is one of the things, I think we have to separate the looking for books versus coming and being a reader of the book, right? Participating. And so, we talked about that after, because it is valuable, and what we've heard is very, very positive and very compelling, and so, we don't want to give up on yet. I do believe there's more time for building that opportunity.
Yeah, good, good.
Anyway, Ajia?
I got a chance to attend Diwali event.
Oh, yeah.
And it was a huge event, so many people were there. It was a great event there. And this is the first time in Novi, so I did not expect so many people, but they came from Lansing, Troy, Farmington, so many other people, so they attended.
Oh, really? That's great.
It was really good event, yeah.
Yeah. It was really warm.
Yeah.
It was a very nice event.
It was amazing. Yeah.
I just wanted to add, and it's the same kind of theme of Beyond Books, and I just want to pick up on the Sunday concert with Ben Charky, the first thing he said, I think this is the first time I performed in a library.
Oh, really?
And which was, you know, it was like, and the first thing that went through my mind was Beyond Books.
Yeah.
And he said he'd never performed in a library. He's a very popular performer, and it was sort of like, as Kathy so eloquently stated, that we have in Novi pulled these things from wherever.
Right.
Staff, the board, whoever puts all these things, the fronds, the historical commission, but pulled these things together that weren't so common in the past, and they're in our library, and I think they're well-received and well-represented, and we're seeing people looking for parking spots because they're so well-attended.
Yeah, that's true. We will need to look at this past week, the Sunday, you know, Sunday, the ninth, through the end of this week, in terms of attendance in the building, only because Community Read was also Monday night, and there were over a hundred, almost a hundred and fifty people at that event.
Wow.
I mean, we had hundreds on Sunday, hundreds on Monday, hundreds on Wednesday, I mean, it was, yeah, along with students, you know, coming in the building, which is normal. So, it'll be interesting to look at that week. Yeah, just a busy week it was. So, thank you, I appreciate, you know, the wonderful comments to the staff. I will, I have meetings next week for director Q and A, and I am happy to express that to them.
You know, could I say also, I think we have, there's something magic about the partnerships that we have with the friends, the historical commission, and the library staff. All of this seems to work very well in our favor. I hope that we can keep these connections going.
Yeah.
Because we really do work well together, and I think that enhances everybody's program, so, we're really fortunate that we have these partnerships that really do meet together and discuss, you know, so that we're not stepping on each other's programs. We want all the programs to succeed, and that's the way it works. So, I just feel that that's important to be said.
Well, I think a perfect example of that partnership was the sixty-fifth anniversary celebration. We had the friends, we had the historical commission, and the staff was very involved, and they...
And you as a board member, I mean, it brought it...
And, you know, it was a great event, and we all came together. There was a lot of planning, a lot of meetings, a lot of...
The video was a special.
Oh.
The video was fantastic.
Yeah, shout out to Dana.
Yes, yes, and Josh Fisher from, yeah, Studio Six from the city. It was, yeah, it was...
I'd like to also talk about the sixty-fifth and kind of echo what Lori was saying. The staff worked so hard, and the committee worked so hard, and it was really special to be there with everyone, but also, the mayor came, our state rep came, Kelly Breen, and our representative Dingle, somebody from her office came. Our former mayor, Bob Gat, was there, too, so we had, like, all that support, which really meant a lot. And it's a community hub, and it really showed it that day. A lot of people had fun, so it was really cool.
And long-time, long-time library supporters.
Long-time, yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Casey, Mayor Portem Casey was there, so, yeah, we had a lot of people there.
And even the Walker family. We had members from the Walker family.
And the Walker family.
Yes.
Yeah, that's really important, they were there. There's a picture in the packet, yeah.
I put a picture in for you, and the professional photos were received. Dana was out of town, and now she's back, and she will make sure that we will share all of them and get some other photos up as well, but, yeah, it was really, it was really great. You know, you started planning that in January, and it went so fast.
Right.
And then it was like, over, you know what I mean? But it's not over. Because the way, what I keep saying is, it was actually, that was just the kickoff to this year.
To our sixty-fifth year, exactly.
Yes, yes. So, let's continue that momentum, and, you know, the fun and things like that. I think we should be talking about the sixty-fifth all year.
Maybe there's like another pop-up event, not as big.
Our half-year celebration.
But I think, you know, just because so many people were generous from that event to go towards our sixty-fifth and the project, what's going to happen if we supersede that? Like, we should think about that, right? Because we're over half, and it's only November.
Right.
And we still have a full year of fundraising. We need a certain amount for that space, but if people are coming to the table and want to give, we should give them an opportunity for their money to go somewhere that they want, you know?
Sure. I think what we can do, because the project itself is going to be much more than that.
Okay.
So, just so you're aware.
Okay.
We, you know, we were coining the sixty-five and sixty-five thousand, but, yeah, the actual project for youth renovation will be greater than that. So, it will be just very much helpful and, yes, appreciated, because it'll just, it'll help take off, right, what might come from capital expenses and then go towards it in that way.
And I think once the area is renovated, it'd be good to have, like, that ceremony and invite all the people that donated.
Yes, yes. We are keeping that information. Unfortunately, some people are anonymous.
Yeah.
Darn it, but we'll... But we'll make sure that they know. And, yes, there, there would be a really big unveiling and ribbon cutting. And, yes, some major celebrating for that as well. I agree with you. Yeah.
Anybody else? That concludes the President's Report. I'll turn it over to the Treasurer.
Okay, we've got the amended numbers for quarter one. But more importantly, what's coming up is the budgetary meetings. And I need to remind everybody that everything that is in yellow is not real. So unfortunately, that means in our budgeting session, we're probably, we're going to have much more emphasis on cutting and cost cutting than we normally have. We did reach out to council. Council has reached out though to Julie. So I'm going to pass it, they do, with all their committees, all their committees run on an OMA basis. They publish agendas, they do full meetings and so forth. So we do not have a place on a finance committee's agenda with council. But Julie has got a meeting with the mayor. And I'm going to pass it over to Julie with what's going on there.
Yeah. I, I have a meeting coming up next week. So I'll be happy to give you more details and then connect with the finance committee right after. Yeah. Thank you.
With our finance committee.
With your finance, yes, with, with our finance committee, correct.
And that's, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for our Treasurer? I guess not. Moving on our agenda to Director's Report.
Okay.
You, Julie.
Thank you. On page 36, we have our Years of Service, December Aniversaries. So I would like to call out Emily Brush, who is celebrating 10 years. She is from the Information Services Department. She is our Youth and Teen Services Supervisor. So congratulations, Emily. And then we have Shannon O'Leary, also celebrating 10 years. She is with our Information Services Department. And many of you know her as our International Language Librarian. And she was here last, last month talking about the Read Project for Japan. So congratulations to Shannon. And then Asar Tahaf is celebrating two years. She's with our Support Services Department and one of our shelters. So congratulations to all three of them. Below, I wanted to just, you know, reiterate and, and put some information in about the 65th document and make sure that there's, you know, some good information. Many of you have mentioned already names and stuff. I, I do want to call out one more time, DTE, Sing Development and Vibe Credit Union. They, you know, they gave monetary donations in order for us to, to help with the party that we, that we put on. So it was, we very much appreciate them. And I do echo Kathy with our great partnership with the Friends and the Historical Commission as well, because we, we really do work well together. I, I don't know what it is, but the number three just stays with me. And that's three, it's like the trifecta and it's good stuff.
It's a Fibonacci number.
Is it? Okay, well, I gotta tell you. It's one of my favorites and it is. So I do believe in that and it's, it was great. As we move on, I did put in, you know, that we are raising the 65,000. And next month, I'll put it in. And guess what? Those green books will be higher than what they, than what they are on page 38. So as, you know, from the wonderful donation that we got from the Friends today, we will be moving right along, which is awesome. Also, on page 39, you know, we took part in celebrating 20 years of Melcat. You know, that is our, our state catalog where we can borrow materials through the state. And so a shout out to Amy Birmingham and Jordan Erman, plus Support Services Staff, Jean and Tracy, who are on the outreach team. They took mittens around and we got some photos. And then we, you know, we shared it with Melcat. And it's a way for us to celebrate them and how they support us, but also celebrating our library. So thank you to the staff for doing that and, and then being reciprocal with providing that information. Let's see.
May I interrupt your question, Julie?
Yes, absolutely.
In regard to Melcat? And we've been with Melcat for obviously a long time. It's a relatively nominal expense, isn't it, in terms of membership with Melcat?
Yes, it is. And, and in terms of delivery costs of, I can't give you a number right now, but if you wanted something, I think.
No, no, no. It, it's just a rather nominal number is what I, I thought for the great services that we get.
And then we have access to, you know, not only TLN and the 4 million that we have just through our consortium, but that's state catalog and sharing throughout the state as well. So more opportunities for that. Yep, it's great. And people are using it. We do have people that use it on a monthly basis, you know, that will look for things that are not in consortium or, or catalog that we have. Yep. Just more accessibility, more opportunity.
Great.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 you are good. I, in fact, I, what's following is all of the reports from all of the different department heads. I'm happy to address any questions that would be in any of their information.
I do have a question.
Yes.
On page 41.
Okay.
The memorandum. Did anybody from the library participate in that?
I did. It's part of my Director's Report. So, yes.
Oh, okay.
It was a wonderful three-day opportunity to see how the library, or how the city's going to kick off with high-performance organization and being a part of that. So, yeah.
Okay.
Now I hope...
Did I supersede you? I'm sorry.
No, no, no. And now I hope with this, an opportunity, if it comes along again, to send some other staff as well. Yep, first time that I had the opportunity to do that.
I have a question.
Sure.
On page 58.
Okay.
The Northville user usage.
Yes.
So, thank you for this explanation. Like, this was awesome. I'm just wondering, so for the, is it 340 Northville users are registered as SAS guests at Novi?
Yes.
Are they no longer able to do that?
No.
Because we're not connected or?
They're the number that have come in and actually registered their card with us.
To be here.
Correct. So we are servicing 340.
So they have access to more books because of our network?
Okay. Yes. So they, yes. So as of right now, 340 have, they had to come in and register themselves in their card. Because now that they're not in the system, they've got to add it in as a, as a shared, you know, not as a shared, but as an outside library.
Oh, okay.
Right. Because they're not in, they're not in the shared system anymore.
Right, right.
Right. So, yes, I wanted to give you some totals just so we could see what's happening, right? Knowing that we're, they're next door and, and how are we using, how are they using us and, and coming in? So, and then as you can see, at the end of October, there are 10,000 Northville users remaining in the system. But they haven't come in, you know, like they were changing over their records and eventually they'll get rid of them. That, that means there could be more people eventually that could come in. But right now, 340 are registered.
And if they register as guests, they get full privileges like the rest of us, right? Or no?
No, they do not. If you're, if you're not a resident, they will not get the privileges of our databases and things like that that we pay for specifically for our community. Yes. You'd have to be a taxpayer for that.
Thank you.
Isn't there some talk about the Northville Library moving?
I, I, I don't, I don't have any details. I know that they have talked, they had a meeting last week that I understand, last week, Monday, I think it was, where they're talking about planning and, and, you know, what to do. I think they're at capacity, their space. And I, I don't know what the plan is, but they're going to start looking at.
I don't really have a question, but I have a comment. So every once in a while, I surf the NPL website every once in a while, just because I'm nosy and I wanted to see what all was on there. But anyway, I ran across something that I'm sure that everybody here knows all about it. But I ran across a form that I thought was kind of intriguing, the library visit request form. And I, I don't think we promote this enough. I think it's really good for homeowners associations or any, like, if your group wanted to come, just if you had a group of friends or whatever. You actually could fill out a form.
Yep.
And you could attend Storytime, or you could go on a tour, you could even have a scavenger hunt at the library. You know, there would be opportunities to do all that kind of thing. And I think maybe there's some groups that, you know, I just wonder if maybe at the next big homeowners thing, if maybe something like this could be promoted? Or maybe you already do that? I don't know.
It's, it's hard to promote big time if you don't have lots of staffing to provide it. And so I try to be cautious.
I see.
Do you know what I mean? Because I want to be able to meet the demand.
Yeah.
And we have been able to. It's more for schools and school visit stuff. But we, we will do tours for big groups, absolutely. And then we try to spread the wealth a little bit. I've done those types of tours along with, you know, people from different departments. But I, you know, I, I want to be careful because, yes, we want people to know about the library, but we have to also think about how we would incorporate.
I just thought there's organizations that meet here and maybe they're not even aware that, you know, they could really not just rent the room, but they also could learn more about the library.
Right. They, they could if we, if we can work it in, yes.
I'm sure all of you knew all about this one. But I thought it was fascinating.
But yes, we are, we're happy to give tours.
What a great thing, yeah.
I think the best way to let people know about what we have is literally speaking with them and sharing. I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's so much.
Well, and because in the form, you, you would have the opportunity to tell them when you'd have staffing available.
Yep.
So, I mean, there is, you know, there is some time that you could put it together or whatever.
Yes, absolutely.
But anyway, I know that, I think it would be great to be able to offer it to homeowners groups and maybe some other organizations, even though I know it's...
Right.
I just think that would be an awesome thing.
One of the things I can share with you, though, is if a homeowners association holds a meeting at the library, if they give, we will give them the room for free if we can have 10 to 15 minutes to talk about the library.
Oh.
So we will do, we won't incorporate a tour because that's even more. But we do give them a free space for HOAs if they give us the opportunity to have the mic for about 10 to 15 minutes.
That's awesome.
Yep. And that's already built in with HOAs when they call and set up the room.
Right, that's great.
In fact, Amy is the person that says, will you want a tour? Or, no, sorry. Will you want, you know, will you want a presentation? Because if you do, for, you know, for 10, 15 minutes, you wouldn't have to pay for it, the HOA.
Yeah. Is there anybody that refuses?
Not very often. Every once in a while.
Yeah.
It's very often.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Sorry to take the time on that.
No, I have a, I always enjoy looking at the different professional development that the staff does. Do you guys ever have a, a opportunity for people to share what they've seen? Or do they just mostly recommend these things to their, you know, colleagues and stuff? Or do you ever have an opportunity in a professional development setting to share, like, here's something I saw and this is what I took away from it?
We don't have formal.
Yeah.
But I'm, I am very confident that they're sharing.
That happens, yeah. Yeah, because some of the topics sound really interesting.
Yes. Or if they've attended, they will share. Because sometimes if you buy the webinar, you know, and you're part of it, then you get the recording.
Oh, okay.
Staff will share that and say, you know, I, I attended this and it was really good if anyone wants to also see it and participate. We've also done that as well.
Nice.
Yep.
Nice. And then I did have one more thing.
Sure.
Library IQ in Dana's report, is that something?
The merger?
For library market, yeah, this merger thing. Can you talk a little bit about that or?
It's pretty standard. I mean, it, this happens.
Okay.
And I don't see anything affecting, you know, what we're, what, what we're doing with this vendor.
Oh, I was just curious, I'm not worried about it being...
Yeah. And library IQ is another vendor we've, we've worked with in the past.
Okay, so it's just a...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. That happens.
Yeah, sure.
In fact, one of our big, I don't know if you, if you're paying attention at all, but Baker &amp; Taylor, one of the biggest book...
I've heard about that, yeah.
Not publisher and also warehouse for sales of books. They are no longer going to be in existence.
Oh, wow.
Yes. And I am so happy that many years ago, we made a change and we've been purchasing our materials through a company called Broadart. And so there are libraries that are, you know, they're, they're really scattering to, to find ways to get materials in the building and get things purchased. And, yeah. So we're not running into that problem as much, which I'm very happy about.
Good, good. I have a question.
Yes.
On page number 46. And this is related to the phone number, phones that will be removed from the conference room?
Yes.
So is that, you know, how often the room, phones are used from the conference room?
They weren't. And that's why we, yes. And that's why we had them removed. They just weren't getting used at all.
Oh.
So we didn't want to pay for something that wasn't being utilized. We had it for, we had them for a while and didn't, didn't need them to, to redo our, our current contract with them. And that had a little bit of savings. But, yeah, they were not being used.
Used at all. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions for our Director?
Anything else? No, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. This is a section on our agenda where we give the public a second opportunity to direct their comments to the Board. I may not see any members of the public, so I shall move on. Committee reports. I would ask any Chair of any committee to report on their committee if there was something that they wanted to report on. Chair's not here, another member of the committee. But other than something that's going to be taken up for matters, library board action later on. Any committee information, anybody want to share? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to matters for library board action. The first item there is a first reading for computers and internet usage policy on pages 80 through 86. And this is the first reading, so, you know, it'll give us a chance to collectively give comments now. It's my understanding we'll go to the Policy Committee before it comes back for a second back for a second reading.
Correct. We have a policy meeting scheduled for the eighteenth of November. So, this is a big overhaul. Let me just share. Um, if you look, the original, um, policy was, uh, the last time, I mean, it's been reviewed, but the last time it was really looked at, um, was two thousand seventeen. Um, and, you know, we've had a lot of changes with the way we do things in the building as it relates to technology. What I also did is I sent this to our attorney in order to get feedback as well, um, before bringing it to you, so that you could see the differences and, and changes and recommendations for what's going in the policy now. We, not every computer, I think the, the one thing you should know is not every computer, um, all the public ones can be filtered and, and have that, but there are some computers in, in the library that can't, and so we're spelling that out so that people are aware of that, and if we run into issues, you know, they're, they're made of, they're made aware of that specifically, because some of the, um, software that we use can't always lock down based on what's being used on the actual computer, and, and the iCube is an example of that, and that's where we've noted some information here as well. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Um, I don't know, I don't know how much it costs, but, I mean, typically, there is software that I think in IT, they're able to remote in and delete files and do certain things. Um, even the computers in the iCube, they probably could, I'm not sure. I mean, when I think about, like, where I work, and everybody has all different types of computers...
Right.
And we're global, they're able to remote in. I just don't know how expensive that type of software is.
So, we have, we do have, we do have parameters, whoops, sorry, um, on the computers, you know, like I said, for the public. We don't do it with our staff, because if they need to get to things, we don't do it with our staff.
Sure.
Um, but I was, we were finding that there were problems with the current stuff that we have that was not allowing those computers to run efficiently
Interesting.
and some of the software
Okay.
with it. I'm not so worried, nor do we have issues, but what was important was to put language in there so that if there was a concern, you know, we could let them know that. I think it's more having it so that we have something in writing that says, you know, not all the time, really. Um, I can let you know that whenever the public uses our computers, when they're done, they cash out. We don't keep a history, things like that. That's very important to us, so people, unfortunately, people will come back and say, "Oh, I was just on this computer and I need this."
Nope, it's gone.
Yes, right. We don't want to do that either. We don't want to keep those, that type of history and things like that, right. And then we also have other mechanisms, like if we're talking about inappropriate material that could be seen on a computer, we also have measures in place as well through, through our other policies, one being the behavior policy and then the computer use policy, where, you know, you, if, if it was something that was obscene, that is against the law, we have measures in place already to handle that. Um, or if the behavior continues and it's bothersome to others, we would address it in that way as well.
Okay.
So, but I just, you know, with, with having the attorney, because it had been a while, we needed, one of the things was SIPA compliance, um, which is mentioned here, and then E-Rate, which we can actually get E-Rate funds if we're one hundred percent SIPA compliant, but we're not, because we have staff computers that are not filtered in the way that the public is, but the public computers are what we're most, um, concerned about.
So, with the, the new policy, once it's adopted, and if it's adopted, um, would that be available in the iCube space so that people would know it ahead of time?
Yes, and we'll have it, we will have it posted and, absolutely, yep, that type of information. And the other thing that hasn't come yet is there's an iCube policy, and because of these changes here, it will affect the iCube policy that we currently have, and I have the iCube committee working on that right now.
Okay.
They didn't have it ready to queue up along with the computer policy, but it'll come in tandem with it, you know, just after it, but this needs to actually precede it anyways and, and come first.
Um, my comment on page, um, eighty-two, um, the new comment about iCube makerspace computers, isn't that like a repeat of the comment on page eighty-one? Am I missing something? It just looks like a duplicate.
Um, this has to do with file deletion on page eighty-two versus just the iCube makerspace computers. So, I, I can check, but I, I had Jeff, our head of IT, put in where he felt it was needed, because if it was related to that, he was looking for that language to be there and, and be strong enough should we need it.
And I think that we both, they talk about it, doesn't, it's not protected by the instant restorer software.
Right.
And the files and browsing history are not automatically deleted after each use. Um, I, I was, I, I mean, I was reading them and not trying to understand what was difference, why they were there twice is what, I'm not saying they're wrong.
Yeah.
I just didn't know why they were there twice. It seemed to me they were saying the same thing at, just in different areas of the policy.
I think what's, what's different is the, the sentence where it says, "Therefore, iQ patrons are responsible for deleting personal files," that information, and that is, uh, oh, no, it is, iQ patrons are responsible. Um...
Well, the last line isn't on the second part.
It has, yeah.
iQ access may not be filtered.
To the same level. And that's specific to the computers that are in the space versus, I, I can double-check with him if you'd like me to, with this being first reading.
Well, and I, you know, and then there's on page eighty-three, a very similar type of statement, but then upon rereading, I realized that was talking about meeting rooms.
Correct, right.
And I understood the distinction there, and quite frankly, I did not understand the distinction in the two where they were talking about iCube makerspaces.
Okay. I will touch base with Jeff just to see if he's comfortable with that and if it seems redundant.
I have a couple of questions. Um, is there going to be any signage for people that are using the computers in the iCube to let them know that they need to delete their, because they're not going to read this whole policy.
Their own files, yeah, right.
You know, is there, like, do you think we need to put a little sign?
Or can...
"Please be aware, you'll need, please delete your files when done, blah, blah, blah," something.
Can there be, like, a, a pop-up on the computer, or even change the wallpaper to say that too, because they need to be warned, I agree.
I can look into it with the team.
I, I, I understand the comment.
Yes.
But I think we're talking about this now because we happen to know it's an issue, but I, won't, won't someone also say all these other points are just as important, that should just, that should also be placed there as opposed to just the file deletion? I mean, is the file deletion any more important than the other twelve points?
Right, and, and not, not to sound, I don't know, crass, nobody reads the signs.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And, and the more signage I put out there, it just muddies.
They don't read anymore anymore, yes.
Correct, but I do agree with you, and I can look into see if there's anything that would queue on a computer.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? So, I, I would like to go back and find out from the team.
There's a lot of signs in there already.
There is.
Yeah.
Like, how to, you know, how to run the machines and things like that, so...
What, 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 like, is that critical?
Right, so, yeah, let me, I will go back to them.
Well, that one might be a little different, just because it deals with privacy and stuff.
I do have, yes, something else.
You'll go ahead, yep.
Um, I had to look up what a keylogger was, and now that I know, everywhere I read, it's one word, not two.
Okay, all right.
That was that.
Nice.
It actually, I believe, um, that, give me the page that you were on, eighty-one.
That's the bottom of eighty-one.
Eighty-one, okay, thank you.
The very last two words.
I believe that was my fault, because, you know, I always read, I think Jeff had it at, at one word, and then I put it in, and I, and I fixed it, so, yes, I will make note of that.
And also, on page eighty-four...
Okay.
I will defer to my teacher friend over here.
Oh.
But I believe in the first red part.
Okay.
In the middle, it says, "The library has installed a program on its," shouldn't it be IT apostrophe S?
No, no.
Nope, that's possessive. IT apostrophe S is, it is.
It is, yeah.
Well, I know, but it's internet connection.
Right, so the possessive form doesn't have the apostrophe.
Right.
To separate it from the contraction of the S.
You should have known that. I should have asked her first, before I went on camera. I knew that. I just wanted to see if she was, you know, keeping me on my toes.
Right, exactly.
That's right.
I knew where you were going.
I didn't catch keylogger being one word, so there you go.
We probably didn't have to look up the definition of what a keylogger was.
Anything else?
Yep, on page eighty-five.
Sure.
On the unblocked sites.
Yes.
Um, somebody can fill out a, is there a form that somebody has to fill out to request a site be unblocked?
They, we have them work with the, the actual library staff if they need it.
Oh.
Yes, and they have, and they have the opportunity to do that.
To unblock something?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yep, because there are sites that are, could be very good sites that they might need to go to.
Sure.
It's just the way they are, yeah.
Coded.
Correct.
It was also curious, you have further down on that page, um, that staff will complete an incident report if there's any viola, has that ever happened?
Oh, sure, yeah. And that's why we have that mechanism in place.
That's right.
And then it makes us aware and the person, and should there be, you know, subsequent violations and concerns, absolutely.
Okay.
It does not happen often, though, I'm happy to tell you.
Yeah.
But, yes, it has.
Well, those are all the questions I have on that policy.
Okay.
So, there, all right.
Seeing as it's a first reading, we're not really going to take a vote.
Right.
So, are there any other discussions on, um, the computer and internet usage policy? If not, let's move on to, uh, the meeting room rental and usage policy, which is also a first reading.
Yep.
And it sounds like, Lori, you have a comment on that one?
Did you see my little blue flag?
No, I detected that from your last comment.
Um, the third bullet point, all meetings and programs held during library business are open to the public, so if somebody's having a meeting in there, anybody can just go in there and attend?
Yep, because we are a public building.
Oh.
Yep.
Even if they rent it?
Yep.
Oh, I don't think I ever knew that.
People don't normally do that.
Right.
But, yes, because we are a public building, they do have the right to, yeah.
Oh.
I had a question about the meeting room fees not being refunded.
Mm-hmm.
So, there isn't even a window of if it's before this much before or anything? Was that because of incidents that had happened or something?
Yes, and we had constant people who would do that and then, you know, yes.
I see, okay.
So, we, we made a hard no on that.
Okay.
After a lot of staff time.
And we don't charge enough to fight.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, it makes sense. I knew, I figured it was probably there for a reason, so, yeah.
It was, unfortunately. It, it became more of a hassle than anything, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a couple of little things, but I can get with you.
You can definitely send them, or we can call, absolutely.
Oh, no, I want you to do it in front of the camera.
Is it a problem with its and its? No, but with this being a first reading, I welcome anyone to, if, if you have time over the weekend, um, and up and through Tuesday, um, please send them, because I know that the committee's meeting, and then I could incorporate them in right away. If you don't, don't worry, I will make sure that you will see it, you know, and, and bring it back for the December meeting.
Okay.
Anybody else have comments on the meeting room rental and usage policy? At this time of night? If not, I'd like to move on to the third matter for library board action, which is a recommendation from the HR committee recommending the approval of the recording secretary job posting, and to give the HR committee the authority to interview and select a candidate for hire. Page ninety-seven.
I'll make a, a motion to approve. Is that good?
Um, with, um, any discussion?
No.
Well, I mean...
I've, I've...
I was at the meeting.
Yeah.
I was at the meeting. I mean, it's, it's something that's necessary, and we decided that, well, we should get this out as soon as possible.
Right.
I did ask at the meeting if we could make sure we, uh, let the clerk's office know about this, uh, opportunity, because, um, you know, there may be some clerks over there that would like to have a little extra cash or whatever, but we are really in, um, you know, we want to hurry and get this out there, so...
Yeah.
I'm hoping the board will, uh, approve tonight.
Yes, please.
Sadly, we're gonna not have Amy help us anymore.
I know, right.
Yeah, it's so sad.
Amy, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
It's been amazing. Um, they've been amazing minutes.
Yes.
Also, keeping tabs on us when we have to sign things. But, yeah, I think, you know, I think initially, uh, it was asked of any internal staff if they were interested. Um, there really wasn't any bites on that.
Yeah.
This is, I think, the first time we're going external, right?
Yes, this is new.
This is new, and that's, that's why we're, we're bringing it in front of everybody, but we, we definitely need that. I think it's important to have, um, and we obviously know with Amy's skill set, that's kind of the level that we're hoping to get, um, for those positions.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there a means of sending this out to the city?
Yes.
Only because looking at the, looking at the numbers, I mean, when we do a job board and say we want somebody for four to six hours a month, I can't imagine getting a lot of people jumping up and down saying, you know, "This is a job that I, I really need."
Right, right, yeah. We will, we will, it goes to the city, they'll, they'll post, they put it internally, um, externally. Um, I think I gave you, actually, um, it, it goes to, it'll, and it'll go tomorrow if approved, so we want to move it very quickly. Um, so the city, through TLN, um, our website, social media as well, and, and through Applicant Pro, which actually is the service we use with the city to put out, um, different postings. You know, there might be someone who is retired that's just looking for a few bucks a month or something. I mean, this is, you know, I, if they've got that skill set, why not continue to use it a little bit, and maybe they'll be, uh, and maybe it'll be of interest, so, yep. Otherwise, poor Carla's on the...
I know.
I know, right? She's like, "Please."
Please do this.
I, I, I'm, I'm all in favor of, of this and fully supporting. I, I, I also understand the main, uh, reach the level of communicating to everybody in the world, and it may be a hard position to fill.
Right.
And, and then I, I would, might be looking back to saying, "This is like another administrative position at the library that somehow, like any other position at the library, somehow has to be filled and..."
Yes.
Sort of turn it back to library administration
Yes.
if it becomes too difficult to fill
Sure.
because of the nature of the jo, the job and the time, but I'm all in favor of trying to approach it this way initially.
Sure, and I appreciate that, and I do agree with you, that if it were not to go, you know what I mean, we're trying this for the first time, if we're not, I would have to come back and look at it and see how I could integrate it back into a position and, yes.
The, the...
Yep, absolutely, I do agree with you.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, secretary, would you call the vote?
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Halcangas says yes. Trustee Gualapu.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you.
Item number four, the Bylaw Committee is recommending approval of updates to the student representative duties, uh, pages one-oh-three to one-oh-eight, as I think we all know that the city has discontinued, um, what was the, um, youth, uh, youth teen program, and we would like to continue that in some form at the library, so this is suggested language for that. Um, I...
I would like to make a motion to approve with the amendment of some grammatical and punctuation corrections.
And you, you can send those to me and we would make, yeah, we would change them, absolutely.
I'll second.
And move, and second, any further discussion?
I do have one thing, and I hope you don't mind, um, trustee Burke, if I can bring it up, because I think you made a great point today when we were talking.
Sure, as long as I made a great point.
You did. When you, when you look at the cycle, she had questioned, and I appreciate that, the appointment cycle runs January to December. Um, I'd like to not put in the months and figure out when it might work best, if that's okay. And the only reason I say that is, as I was talking and thinking about it more, it might be easier to get this person set up in the spring
Okay.
because we like to use the TAB and TEEN SPACE and stuff, and then get, and then queue up that student to start July through the end of the year and follow our cycle. So, um, if, if I can just, the appointment, there is, you know, there's, the appointment will have a, a cycle, you know, and it could be a, an annual or a one-year cycle or something, if I could have that, to clean that up. That's it, and I don't know if we want to talk about that, you know, the appointment cycle runs. I, it might be easier to say July to June, which, which follows our actual fiscal.
I mean, could you, could you say the, in accordance to the library's fiscal year, instead of specifying the names of the...
Or in accordance to the library's needs?
Yeah.
And then it leaves it real raw, so that, yeah. I mean, do you mean, I'll get there, but I just, I want to see when we can get this started and then...
I don't think you have to put specific...
Okay.
Yeah, months, because you determine that.
Right.
You know?
Brian, I know, do you have a concern?
Well, no, my, my only question is, when this originally came out, is that, you know, this, this is fine for the bylaws as far as how we incorporate student representatives, but my question was, how does the city select these individuals today?
They're not, yeah.
I'm, well, I mean, I mean, when they, when they selected them, does it come through, does it, is it posted at the school? The school says, "Here's one or two representatives," and then send them through?
No, no. That was more, they would put it out and they would just look for students. They would use the school.
Okay, so, so they might post in the school.
Right.
But the school would report to city council.
The school does not report, has nothing to do with it. The kids on their own would, would sign on.
The kids on their own, okay.
Yes, it was totally voluntary from the student perspective. The school has nothing to do with it.
No, because I, I'd like it, I, you know, from the school's perspective, I like the interface to look consistent.
Right. So there is, there's no school component. It's just using the school as a potential.
Well, you use the school as a post, you know, post it in the lunchroom, post it somewhere.
Exactly. And so if I do that in the spring and then queue up.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'd like to use TAB and teen space.
Yeah.
Which will cut off in June, right? So I want to get that done. I think it might, I think it might be easier.
Would you want to use Peach Drive for this one too?
Oh, we could.
Or is that too much?
Yeah, I could probably put it out there through the school. Actually.
Maybe that's too big.
I think I'd rather, it, it would go directly to the high school and their, their E news.
Oh, do they have a separate one?
They do.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yeah.
I'm not.
So I, since we're looking for that age group, you know, that age that's a little older. But, okay, let's go back real quick. The appointment cycle runs in accordance with.
To the library's needs.
Is there an apostrophe there?
Right here in my notes, according to the library's needs.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And there would be an apostrophe, library's needs.
Library's.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to read it back. The appointment cycle runs in accordance with the library's needs, serving two terms based on positive attendance.
Okay.
Would that be?
That's right.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that friendly amendment.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
On the section six, where it does talk about a member of the library staff designated by the library director.
Yes.
Should all be assigned.
Yeah.
To keep accurate minutes. So the new person who'd be hired would be considered library staff?
Uh, no, they would not.
So does that need to be changed here?
We will, yes, we will need to change that.
Okay.
Coming up in the future.
Okay.
I wanted to wait and see.
But leave it now and see what happens, okay.
I wanted to wait and see what happens first.
In case it ends up being like what Mark said.
Correct.
That's, that's great.
Yep, yep. No, I appreciate you bringing that up, Carla.
Yes, yes.
Yep, I didn't want to do the cart before the horse.
Sure, yeah, makes sense.
Yep.
And then more of a Carla comment than a Mark, Mark Stirring comment, but are we, we should be deleting the other section seven?
Which page are you on?
Yes.
Page one oh four.
This is.
Correct, the yellow.
You mean, quite a few little dash lines because that's going out, that's going out.
Correct, this, the, what's in yellow would be the new language and that one would go out.
Okay.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Then I think we can vote on this. It's been moved, it's been seconded. No more discussion. Would you call the vote?
Trustee Halvengas says yes. Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
And trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Item five is the next item for library board action. And this is something that was handed out tonight. It's a draft of the Novi Public Library Annual Report. This would be something that we, a fair number of people work on. And I guess this would be to solicit comments here tonight from the board members? Or is it just a review?
It really is just a first read.
It's for you, just for a first look? I don't know if events marketing and fundraising, if you want to go ahead and, yep, talk to.
Yeah, so, um, Events Marketing and Fundraising Committee met today. This is the second draft to us, but this is the first draft to you.
Right.
And Mark, you did a great job. Your letter looks really good. What I want you to understand though is what you see printed out before you.
Yes.
It's actually a print of the webpage that's built for the newsletter. So it's not quote unquote, print ready. It's not designed for that. It's designed for the web. So this is just kind of giving you an understanding of what information's going to be on the annual report. There's still some numbers in certain sections that need to be updated, but overall, we just wanted to get this in front of you so you kind of know the direction that we're heading. For example, after Mark's thoughtful note to the community, we decided this morning that putting the infographic on the impact right after that made more sense because I think visually, it's pretty striking when it comes to those numbers and previously it was further down. So we made that decision today. There's some other things that we've talked about today to kind of update and change, like more like graphic design suggestions, bolding suggestions. For example, you see all the first words are bolded, that's going to change where, like something that we advised was you should bold what you want people to really pay attention to and see. So it has to be more intentional and it's just not everything. So those are just little things that are going to get updated. But Dana, our communications manager, always does a fantastic job. We just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to look at it. The video from the sixty-fifth is also going to be a part of this. Because it's on the web, we're able to do that. On the truncated print version, Dana's probably going to put a QR code so that people can scan it. I'm not a hundred percent yet, but I'm sure she'll do something really cool so that people can access the video. Where you see the zeros, that's the holding to get the final number. So if you see any zeros anywhere, that doesn't mean we didn't get anything. That's just, because we need more accurate numbers. And then another section that is going to improve design-wise, but we really wanted to call your attention to, was the voices from our community. That section is just so special because you're hearing direct from members of our community how much they love the library. So there's just some consistency things that Dana's going to finesse. Also, you know, we've got the pie chart that kind of shows our, our budget in two seventy-one. She's also going to make one for two seventy-two, so that still has to get worked on.
Right.
But we just wanted to make sure that you saw this first initial draft. And if you have any questions or any feedback, I think Julie, you need those by Tuesday as well? Or do we have longer for that?
We have a little time on this.
Yeah.
In fact, I'm queuing up for Dana to be here and present.
Yep.
For the December meeting.
December meeting.
We will have a meeting, the Events Marketing and Fundraising, before the next.
Early December.
December meeting as well to make sure that everything is ready to go.
Right.
And then we will bring it for your approval at the December eleventh meeting. And that is getting us ready for presentation.
To counsel.
On Monday to counsel for December fifteenth.
Yeah.
So we're moving right along.
We're moving along.
So as you're looking at this, if you see anything, please.
Yeah.
You know, send thoughts, grammatical, anything. You know, but, you know, even if a photo doesn't look right or doesn't seem like it's, you know. Mark, one thing to point out to you on the front page, if you see that yellow there, I have, I have to double check on that number.
I, well, I pulled that number from somewhere, but I'm having, I'm having trouble where I pulled it from.
And that's okay, I have to verify it anyway, so that's why.
And we usually do the, when I do some numbers, we go back and forth to make sure we're, we're using the latest information instead of earlier information. But I pulled it from somewhere, but it seemed so high, I, I had, began to question it myself.
Yes, so I, we are, we are looking at that one.
Actually, last year.
What did you say, last year?
Well, I. I, we talked after Dana and I, and there's, there is a discrepancy in some numbers. So I don't want to put a number out there yet until I know for sure. We're looking at something.
That means he's the most important.
Right there in the middle, up on top in the middle. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's it.
Good job.
Wonderful.
Good job, Dana.
Yes.
Dana deserved it.
Yeah.
And then she works her magic and I just go, okay.
Uh, that really is the last of the matters for library board action. There is some communication on page one oh nine explaining, really, in response to a concern about our study rooms and the good explanation is to.
Could I say some, could I ask about that? You know, it seems like we have received several.
Yes.
Communications regarding this. And I always learned, having been a politician, that if somebody takes the time to write to you, there is a whole large number of people out there that didn't write but feel the same way. So I am beginning to be concerned about the meeting room space and how it's used. I don't presume that there are kids in there just eating. Every time I've gone past a room.
I've never seen it.
It looks like they're studying. I don't know, I'm not going to make a judgment.
They do.
About what's going on in the rooms. But I am concerned, because I know that, I've talked to people too that said, well, I was going to come here and go in one of the rooms. I mean, they didn't write anybody, they were just telling me. But they're all busy during the day. I mean, like, when school, before school was even out. So how can that be students? They should be at school, you know? They were so sure there would be an open room, but there's never an open room.
There never is.
And that causes me to wonder if somebody's not in there an inordinate amount of time. I mean, even our restaurants now are setting a timeframe that you have to be out. I'm wondering if maybe we should discuss this further as a board. Because I'm beginning to think that maybe there are other people out there that are feeling the same way.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that. The only consideration I would have is, I think, you know, Julie's point about people doing tutoring and stuff and booking it up and so the kids don't get it would be an issue for one. And also then you're talking about staff people having to monitor and keep track of and, you know, so that's another position. That would be, I agree with you on, you know, the principle, but I just think for the logistics that.
See, other libraries are doing it though, right? How are they handling it?
Good question.
They're also smaller.
Okay.
Salem South Lion, you know, Northville.
Yeah.
Yeah, these, we're the, we're the big one in this area.
Yeah.
And I can't tell you the number of people that come to our library to get a seat and then get a room and, and it's not even our community members.
Yeah, okay.
So it's, I, I don't know, I'm, you know, it's been a couple months since we had this. I think it just comes up, like, if I were to count, maybe two to three times a year, someone brings this up?
Yeah.
I mean, and that's, I'm giving you anything that's coming directly to me. You know, because I want you to see the response. It's, I, I just find it, and they're not, here's the other thing, they're not next to a school. They're not next to, there's some things that we're doing that are unique to us for the use of the building.
I have seen, and I have seen like one person in several of the rooms, just one person. And so I know that we were talking about perhaps making them aware that they could use the.
The pod.
The single-use booth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
And I wonder if that's something being done.
It isn't right now because there's only one of them. What I'd like to do is put in, you know, the extra one. Not everyone is comfortable sitting in that space though. And, and we have the quiet study room, you know, where single users could be sitting in there for quiet space as well, so that's another option. We had before a policy where if you were a single user, but that, if, if a room, and it was a six-person room, was the only room available, and a single person sat in it, if you were a single person, we'd bump you if there was a bigger group. That's not fair because if someone's in there and they're on a Zoom call and they're doing an interview, why does, why does that space then, and that person get kicked out because they're a single user, but that was the one that was the only one left to use and have available? I don't want to do that. And, and we've had more of that since COVID and since, you know, virtual and meetings and those types of things are happening.
And guess what? What is disturbing to me in a way is that this person, and then the other, the, the most recent one that we had before this, mentioned about, well, the people in there weren't doing, you know, they were mentioning that whoever was in the room were, were not students or they were eating and they weren't doing anything else.
That's their perception.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, those kind of comments bubble up in a community.
Right.
And they spread out. I don't want people to start thinking about us that we have this issue.
Yeah.
If another people are mentioning the same thing.
I don't really think we have an issue, I'll be honest with you. And when I, when I heard that comment, I mean, I'll, I'll use the kids. They go get their food, they come into the study room, they're eating their food.
Yeah.
They might be talking while they're eating.
Yeah.
And then, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes later, they start studying.
Yeah.
And I, most of the time, when I walk by, because I purposely walk second floor when I walk out to go, they are usually in there studying. They're not goofing around. If they're goofing around, they're usually loud and then we're in there and we're saying, hey, you know, you, you're not using the space wisely, right? Or you, you need to calm down or figure out what you're doing. But for the most part, those, the kids come over and they're, they're pretty respectful to the space and, and them using the space. The other thing I want to point out too is, sometimes it's better to have those students in a room, six of them, using that room for whatever they're doing, group study or whatever, than to be out in the library itself and for that to be a disruption out in the library. So you've got both sides. And, and in some cases, I'd rather have them use that room instead. And maybe it's a group project or whatever, so they're using that space then in a, in a really good way than to be out in the middle and being really loud, but they're having a conversation and they're, you know, they're studying or they're doing a group project. I, so it's, it's very difficult. This is, this is a, a difficult thing that we will, that we address once in a while.
This person mentioned that the teen lounge was empty, or lounges, but we only have one.
The teen lounge is the one on the second floor.
Yeah.
And we've been very specific about that space being for the teens. During the day, if it's empty, adults, you know, we've, we've been pretty open to them sitting in there, but soon as the teens come.
Yeah.
We're not going to cater to an adult who needs quiet, it becomes teen.
Well, what she's saying is, is instead of them being in the appropriate spot, they took up the study rooms, is what she's saying in her comment.
But maybe they're doing, but who am I to judge what they're doing to need that space?
Yeah.
I guess I want to be careful with that.
Yeah.
You know, some students study no problem with thirty people in a room.
Yeah.
And they, I mean, because teen space is set up that way, right? So really, those two spaces are more for larger groups that can handle that type of environment where the study rooms are a quieter, quieter environment to offer.